Well, it's a consecutive model, so that's. I haven't noticed. I just haven't noticed.
We just did it. We just did it.
There was like two or three.
When would we? That's again. Uh, right. I say. Tonight, I'm gonna talk.
We better. Apparently.
Apparently.
What the city. We're all of those.
Yes.
No, I didn't take your name to go to the world.
So avoiding. Then to do.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna begin tonight with our invitation by Reverend Mike Hicks of Jones Avenue Church of God for all of our pledge allegiance, and we all stand.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this place that we call home. Thank you for the opportunities that we have here. Things that make our community unique, things that make it safe. Thank you for those whom you've placed in leadership in this community. Tonight, we ask for your presence to be in this meeting. May all that is said and all that is done in this place be done for the best of our community. And may it be done in a way that will bring glory to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Praise to the fire of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. My nation under God, in this. And that's just for all.
And now called to order, the City Council meeting August twelfth, six P M. City of Oak Hill, West Virginia. We'll have our roll call.
Mayor Charles Frisco.
Here.
Councilor Laura Chabass.
Here.
Counselors from Ward one, Terry Van Busker.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Brian Chaney.
Here.
Counselors from Ward two, Tim Buskis.
Here.
P J Elder.
Here.
Chris Gill.
Here.
Thank you. You guys will pull your mics down whenever the audio issue tonight, so if you guys will be shooting the type of mics, and the one out there is not working, so if you're gonna speak, please, we'll have you come up to the podium. All right, you've all read all of the minutes. Now, can we get a vote to approve the minutes?
Oh, I'll move to approve the minutes.
May we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion properly made in second that we approve the minutes, all those in favor.
Uh.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Can we get a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I think that we had said that we could. Let's start financials.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Uh, I think, I think a question that I have is just that. Uh, our rainy day fund was used. I think it was down to eight hundred and ninety-three, somewhere around there. But what in the future do we see that that's, since we don't have a rainy day fund? In the future, is what if another issue arises?
Well, we have budgets to use for our sales tax already. Um, that, we didn't have a rainy day fund for years. We were just able to, during a period of time, maybe all this year, we were able to put some back. Um, as you can see, this year, uh, while for a couple of years, our expenses have. On what our revenues. So. Have to generate some more revenues or cut our expenses.
Can we look at the, um? I guess it'd be on the, uh. Balance sheet, the, uh. Line for the, uh. Test factor.
It's not, it's because it's not part of the general fund, it's not on that balance sheet.
Okay, so, and, and in the, I just want to point out the money that's in the.
There's one point three million in sales tax.
One point three million dollars. And then also, at the end of the fiscal year that ended last month, there was, I can say it correctly, from all the hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Under budget is second round.
And well, we have our financials in.
Let's look at it.
Okay, it's in the documents under the treasurer's.
I was stung over.
And yes, with the look on the expenses, is that what you want to look at for your revenues? Look on the expenses. And you go to your bottom.
Down to the pension.
Yes.
Can you enlarge that, please?
If you did that, yeah, that's it. Y'all see that?
It will be all right, her. Well, there is even better.
So come down to the very bottom. So the budget, um, I think it has a per, should have a per rated budget of three hundred and. Six thousand, one hundred dollars. And then. You go over to the side. I need to see. We left it six thousand eight thousand. But we've spent three hundred and six thousand. But we have five million seven hundred and seventy-four thousand. What? Um.
Now, that's a carryover from last year's budget.
This is actually for July. So we spent three hundred and six thousand dollars in July, that's expenditures. And so our revenues. So already, our revenues are four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So, I mean, I do have to say that July is always a hard month to look at because. Some of the bills that we pay in July are really for June, so I have to put those into the June. Um, expenditures and revenues, so you'll, that's why, some of that's off. Next month, I'll have a report, um, that gives you the prorated numbers, and then you can see. How it compares for that month over under budget. Because right now, we're gonna be under.
I think, I looked at the balance sheet. And. It's showing that the, uh. And of course, it's July, it's the end of fiscal year. But the budget was, uh. Just total assets and other devils, one million, one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. And that left a fund balance, a total fund balance of a hundred and five thousand. Yes, so. So I, and I just want to point that out that we came, not on a great bill, but we came over a hundred thousand dollars under budget.
So going forward, now that we don't have P M C slash the A M C, we don't have that, then is there any other ways to streamline or? I'm not the one to put it that way.
I don't know, I mean, we faced a lot of price increases until those start, you know, it's a lot, the things that the street department does. The pipe that they need for drainage projects have probably tripled, at least tripled in price. I mean, it's just something that, that has happened, and we have to try to figure out what's new.
Is, is that what we use, the eight hundred and seventy-three, four, more or less, to help pay the bills that are actually gotten more expensive?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's, that's what we wanted to know. Now, uh, we understand things go up every day, you know, I mean, look at the price of fuel today, and tomorrow, it may be a dollar higher.
Right.
We understand that. Um, I think that just what caught us was it caught us off guard.
But it's been, I mean, and I know I didn't, because we're not pointing out this stuff every meeting, but that happened in December, that balance went. The price, it should have been in January, the balance went to zero.
Actually, I seen it all the way up until April.
I had to close the account, but that's probably when the interest, that I made the interest, but, um, I closed those accounts in December, that investment account.
I am kind of, you know. Kind of like her, like Diane is, what are we gonna do? I think a lot of the fear is where we know we may end up have to pay five to six hundred, it's bank, so. Uh, we're already five hundred thousand in the hole from the loss of the revenue from the hospital. I think that is the question that's on everybody's mind here is, what are we gonna try to do to go forward? Loss.
My suggestion at the last, um, when we had the meeting at the end of the year was to review our B N O tax rates. They're not at the highest that they can be. Um, our surrounding communities are at the highest that they can be. And that's, you know, that's an option for increased revenue.
You know, right now, though, I don't think the answer, I mean, I understand that, I do, I don't think the answer necessarily is to push this to our business, especially when we're such in a shortfall for business. I, I would hate to see them have to absorb any of this right now, uh, because they're gonna raise their prices, I mean.
Well, uh, but the B N O tax has not hurt the place that everybody looks at, plus us, it hasn't hurt Fayetteville, it hasn't hurt Beckley, they're still.
We're about twenty-two percent less than our surrounding communities. Uh. For example, I'll take the worst case scenario, just, uh, construction. Um, those, it's the state allowable B N O tax rate for construction is two percent. You know, that's the highest rate. Ours is one point five percent, that works out to twenty-five percent, obviously, but some of the other rates like, uh. Uh, retail, retail is, uh, point five percent, that's the maximum the state allows. And City of Oak Hills rate is point three eight percent. So, so it's, it's, so it's to point five percent, well, I think if you average them all together, it works out somewhere around twenty-two percent cheaper than. Uh, the state allows and the surrounding communities collect.
But I. Me, I, I don't really want to raise B N O. Right now, because we've got so many vacant buildings now in the city. If we was to raise B N O, we're gonna have more than what we got now.
I don't know, that's, that's a good question, because there are communities that, uh, that made it pointed out. That don't have a one vacant building, instead of building one, and they charge the, the maximum.
Yeah, but they don't have one vacant building.
I'm sorry.
They only have one vacant building.
Right, and they charge the, the maximum, I'm pretty sure.
Uh, actually, I think they're, yeah, I think they're five. They're at the five percent, they're point five or whatever.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, not vaguely, I know theirs is at point four, I think.
For retail.
That may have been, they may have had them lower when they got, uh, the sales tax.
I, I, I just looked at their last deal that was on their website, and that's what I went off of. Because when we was talking about that at first. You know, we, I started doing a little bit of looking to see where the cities that were around us, where theirs was at. I, I made a few phone calls to see how many vacant buildings Fayetteville has, now Beckley's got more than that, but growing every day, they're actually growing out, they're not growing in. Uh, we're not growing either, out or in. Uh, so I, you know, that's where I come up not very favorable for the, uh, B N O taxes to be raised. That's just my opinion.
That's the best, but if you, if they're gonna move out, they'd have to go out into the county to get a lower rate.
Well, I understand, I'm just saying, I just don't see the doubt be favorable right now.
If we're gonna ask our businesses to take on a little bit more, which in return is gonna raise prices with that too, then what are, we, we have to do something too. I feel like we can't just say B N O tax is going up, and, uh, that's it, that's how we're gonna fix our budget. I mean, what's the City of Oak Hill gonna do internally to work on fixing their budget? Because I feel like we gotta do something internally also, instead of just, we can't just say, guess what, guys, we're raising your taxes. Uh, we can't just leave it at that.
Yeah, I, I looked at those, all those financial statements that was emailed to us the other day, and it took like several hours, seriously, if you sit down and read each item. And looked at all of everything that was expended out. And I can't, I, I honestly, I don't think that I can look at any department in the city and say, well, you need to cut this, or I don't think this is an expense, that's not, I. I don't think that's us, number one, we're not micromanaging each department. But there's a lot of those expenses, a lot of things that they use, they need that, I don't think, you know, we could all have a different idea, but maybe, I'm just throwing this hypothetically out there that. I don't know, maybe you could get with like each department head from the city hall through all the departments, and maybe ask for, uh, them to look into their. Operations and see if there's something that they can cut, you know, have a plan, come up with a plan, I'm just trying to think out loud here, since you.
I'm a little bit.
You mentioned.
Right.
If there's something we can do, because we don't know, and I don't think it's our job to look at any department and say, you need to cut this, you need to cut that, you need to cut that. But maybe, you know, if you get with each one and say, hey, guys, can you, is there any way you can help out a little here, little there?
And we have, for the last two years, you all, you don't know this, but, yeah. The requests have been, well, each year, um, they have asked anything.
We've already been having those conversations.
And Wiz has already met with some plans. To do some things, so, I mean, we haven't been wanting more, but. And there's, and we can work, we know, we need to work on the overtime some, we can try to do that. Uh, but we do have a new park that we have to do things for. Um. City park that some things are gonna happen that aren't in the budget, or that aren't covered by our, our funding and contract. So, we, you know, we've added a lot of things in the past couple of years.
Yeah. But we haven't, we haven't added business, and I think that's maybe where we're shortfall is, we're not getting more B N O tax. I mean, we're, we do have one point three million, thankfully with the one percent, and that's helped a lot, but. How do we grow that? That's where we have to be, I think. We have to do our part instead of just saying, we're gonna pass this off to the business and increase things even more, because I imagine a lot of the small businesses are probably already struggling. You can't say, here's more sales, B N O sales tax to add to what your total is, because they have to raise their prices.
And what, and what Allison has found in trying to help businesses and do some of that is that none of the buildings on Main Street are habitable, not habitable. So. We have to have work done to them that we have to rely on the owners, we can't, we can't go in and fix their buildings, although she's working on some money.
Right.
To try to.
So this, too, we, you know, we're. We're talking about the rainy day was gone, is gone, or moved over to the general fund, but the chairman actually pointed out that there's still the, the money in that. That, so if that would have been used, we would still, the rainy day would still be.
Right.
So.
Right.
Okay.
And we have, that replenishes itself, that sales tax fund, so it's about two hundred and sixty thousand, um, afford. So that's a million dollars every year, that is not in our general fund budget.
There's, there's another one that I'm not familiar about, and I don't know if it's gone, still there, and I'm just asking if you could elaborate. It was in, it was in some of those things, and I may, I may pronounce wrong. Oh, oh.
Okay, that's where the first money came from. Um, we had to. Oh, it's been two years, probably, we had to set up an account for the retirement for people that are. If we're working, it's our future retirement is a liability to the city, uh, we have to, that's all.
That's state legislation.
Yes, so our retirement, our benefits for, um, in the insurance is a liability. is a liability, so we had to set aside money for that. That's what they told us to do. If we could find it, then we needed to try to find it. We had to carry it on our balance sheets. So, we did carry that on our balance sheets. Um, and we funded it also, so we had probably a million dollars in that. And that was at the same time we were able to fund a rainy day. I don't know, I don't know what Bill did those years when we had so much. Anyway, um.
That stands for other.
Post-employment benefits. So since then, P E I A has made a lot of adjustments. They have um, cut some of the benefits, they've raised the deductibles, they've raised the premiums. They've done a lot of things. Also now, after a certain date, I think it's two thousand fifteen. They don't ask the cities or the state to fund the premiums. On, so if you, if you started after two thousand fifteen and you're gonna retire, you have to pay the whole premium. The city's not responsible for anything. So that has reduced that uh, that liability, so we were able to do away with that fund. So then, that's what we used, that we transferred that to the general fund as we needed money. And, and also another thing that for years, we have had we've gotten all our equipment updated, we've been able to purchase cars for the police department so that they have every year they can get at least two new cars, sometimes more. The street department has gotten, they virtually, everything you all have is new. The fire department has, they've paid for most of theirs, but we've helped them with some, um, but their fire levels paid for a lot of that. So, we're at a good point right now where we have all the new stuff. All our equipment was spent, there's nothing that's been, you can tear it up all the time. And if it does, we have people that know how to plant it.
One, one other thing that's that's related to this. Uh, you know, through the years I've noticed most of the time when a municipal government gets in financial trouble, one of the easy cans to kick down the road is your police pension fund. It's, you know, nobody really, it it's easy to get behind. And the City of Oak Hill, I don't know about today, I don't know about the last couple of years, but for several, several years. Our police pension fund has been funded to the amount of a hundred and twenty-five percent. The highest you can say at one time and probably today.
Yeah, it's one hundred twenty-four point nine.
Okay. And that's a good indication, and I don't like to, I don't know, we'll name many cities, but but one city in particular in West Virginia that was in financial trouble, that was one of the, they were funded down to about seventeen percent. And uh, we're funded the best in the state. And and I remember Mr. Paul said in here from Beckley, I'll, I'll I talked about, I remember the Beckley newspaper ran an article about how well the Beckley Police Pension Fund was funded at seventy-four percent, several years ago. And I thought, wow. I'll, here, I'll show you why it's funded at a hundred and twenty-five percent, so. But. Quick call. Anytime you're getting, you, you're getting close to a hundred percent funded, the pension fund, you're just like, we're a hundred and twenty-five percent.
So, do we, um. If if we, if we had to take the rainy day fund this past time, are we gonna be short that again at around the same timeframe?
Not according to our budgets.
Is there something that we see that may make that budget? None. What was different from this past one that made us all of a sudden have to have the rainy day month? I guess.
Well, just the rise of costs. I can't pin the point.
I got you. So again, if we, obviously, we have the same problems and and we may run into same problems and prices continuing to rise. Uh, this could happen again, but at that point, we wouldn't have, I guess we would have some sales tax left. Based off of what we have left though after the bank. I mean, who knows what that is gonna be? Uh. But the term, you know, used that the city's broke, I think is the wrong term to use. I think that's what was, that was what was used. Um.
And we, I mean, every time if we're, we're doing a drainage project, then we always discuss that and see if we have money to do it or not, and then sometimes we have to knock through the project. There's a lot of things that other works and sanitary work can do that doesn't cost money. It's not what people want you to do.
Right.
But that's, it happens sometimes.
I can tell you from what I've said, I've multiple times, I've worked out there in the field and I see what they do. And Oak Hill is very fortunate because most cities are contracting out for a much, much higher rate of what we've got right here in-house, that we do in-house. We are very blessed with the people and the knowledge and the capabilities that they have. We do projects, drainage projects and stuff for a fraction of, there is cities that have like some things that we've had come up that they would have to go to and out, out, a contractor to pay to bring in for a much higher cost.
The retention pond that we did to help that water on Euler Avenue. We, we could have never done that without the influence that we have. When that was, we paid, I think that was about seventy-five thousand dollars. To, I mean, that's just the material.
That's, and a lot of that was the the material that it.
We had to pay somebody to do that, it would have been.
And those guys knew how to fuse that by themselves, shoot their grades, you know, everything. And we would have had to contract that out, it would have been.
And we probably wouldn't have done it. And there's a lot of those all over town that are, they're major drainage projects. So for the ones that um, are listening right now, along with you too, um. The biggest concern that I've ever approached with or been contacted was, you know, is the message that he put out, the city was broke, so they're not broke, and we have filed papers. None of those are true. If anybody wants to see anything, I'll, I have whatever they want to look at. Everybody come to come in here and get it, look at it.
I'm really glad to hear you say that because that is one thing that we need to let the people of the city know, we are very transparent.
They can see anything. We are all, it's our own personal.
We are a transparent management team, you're a transparent council. We're not trying to hide nothing from anybody. And, and I appreciate what you just said there. They can come at any time and ask. All we gotta do is come up. It's their privilege.
We have the list that I sent you of every check that was written from every fund. So, anyone's welcome. That's in the email. Some things I can't.
Thank you for making the connection. Mayor on the notion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll second that.
Listen to the mayor accept the treasurer's report and second. All those in favor? Uh, also. Wanting this area, do we have any correspondence? Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to our citizens' comments. Mr. PK Cart, isn't it?
Casto.
Casto, I'm sorry, that worm of glasses.
You're fine.
And it's Mrs. PK Casto.
Yes, yes.
Miss Casto, we might love to.
Can't stand very long, so I, I think I can talk loud enough for everybody to be able to hear me, can't I? Well, am I?
Yeah, we hear.
Okay. Okay, I just have an issue with the right of way. I live out at the end, the far end of Central Avenue. This has been going on for quite a while. Road's been moved more over to my side of the road over the years, and I'm not sure why, because there's a forty-foot right of way there. And I talked to Demita about this a little over a week ago. And she told me that the reason my end of the road isn't getting service that rest of it gets is because of my neighbor, Mr. Kiska, that complains. Well, he just happens to be my brother. And I'm not here to start any trouble or anything like that, but I'm also not here to play. My neighbors half ago, put their, moved their mailboxes from Shuff Street down onto Central Avenue. Now, Hank Shuff was setting them and my brother asking not to put them there because it's directly across from my driveway, which makes it extremely difficult to back out of because the mailboxes are sitting out in the right of way, a minimum of fifteen feet. And Hank said he was just doing what his dad told him to do. And uh, that the, he told my brother that the post office had told them to move their mailboxes. Well, I had the new postmaster out there, Mr. Sigler. And he said, no, they didn't tell them to move them, that Mr. Bill Shuff came up to his office and asked if they could move them. And wanted to put them by these other mailboxes that are there that are also out in the right of way. But weren't directly across from my driveway. And the postmaster, without even going out to look at the situation, just told him, okay, yeah, he could move them. And I've had the postmaster out there, I filed a complaint with the post office, I had the postmaster out there. I'm, my way through the channels there. And I called Bill last Thursday, I think it was, Bill Shuff, and asked him to move them because of the difficulty getting out of my driveway. And he said he would think about it. He told me if I hit his mailboxes, it's not to worry about it. Well, if I hit his mailboxes and I'm in there, I'm gonna sue him. I'm gonna sue the city, because you guys know about it, and you've known about it for a long time. I don't understand why this is happening. The last time they paved the far end of Central Avenue, they poured a six-to-eight inch high bump in front of my driveway, the full length of it. Which would have caused my van to drag. And they had to come back out and shave it down. And all the driveways on the other side of the road, they blended the asphalt in with those. So, you know, their entrance and stuff was reasonable. Well, when they ground that down, they didn't grind it down all the way. My driveway was tall, was higher than the road slightly. And uh. And they finished what they were gonna shave down, which, like I said, wasn't all of it, they filled the remainder with gravel. And I just don't understand why the people on the side of the Central from Rake Street to Shuff Street are allowed to push their property lines out into the forty-foot right of way.
And I did explain to Mrs. Casto that that part of Central is this, is under control of the state, so.
Actually, it's not, Demita. Actually, it's not. I spoke with Mrs. Thomas, I think her name was Laurie Thomas, at District Nine, and no part of Central Avenue belongs to the state.
That's what they told us.
City has it all the way to Shuff Street, it's the top of the hill there. And I know they've been saying, you know, Day Day told my brother that uh, the city's responsibility ended at Rake Street, and it doesn't. All you've got to do is go to Fayetteville and get a copy of the map. Truth be known, Mr. Bill Shuff's corner of his house on the corner of Shuff and Central is in the forty-foot right of way. I don't know why he didn't survey before he built.
I don't, no, I I will, I'll, I'll, I know several years ago, I actually met with state boat employees from District Nine in front of the Lucas House.
I spoke with Ms. Thomas Friday, I think it was, Thursday or Friday last week. And she told me no part of Central Avenue belongs to the state.
Employees, the state employees, when I take a seat, they looked at it. I haven't talked to them, I don't know what the outcome was. I think you looked at it, Charlie.
I've always heard that it's the states, it's department.
And so we haven't really looked at the right of way to see if that, you know, infringes. I mean, normally, like I said, unless it it affects our uh, plowing, we're not too concerned about the right of ways.
Our right of way is supposed to always stop at Hickory. S D O H, Mayor. My learn, Kenison.
And the last time they paved that end of Central, they slightly angled the road to the left side of the street, going out. It causes more water to run onto that side instead of running down the middle of the street. I don't know if you guys are aware, but there are springs under that property, natural springs. And they really just don't need more water there.
So what are you looking for in a solution?
I want the mailboxes moved. I want to be able to get out of my driveway. I'm not twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five years old anymore. I don't turn as good as I used to. It's back up. It makes it difficult. And I could, I could manage it with those two other mailboxes there, but with the three additional, it practically covers my entire driveway. I want the mailboxes moved.
And you haven't heard anything from your appeal to the post office?
We're still in negotiations.
Okay, we'll look into some more and get some verification on that.
I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Casto. Now we're gonna move on. Recognition of Tyler Gray, our G I S coordinator, received a national award from ESRI. And we will uh, give you more details on that next month when Tyler's back. He's out doing some work right now, so. We'll talk about that a little bit more next month. And also, since we are talking about some awards, I don't have an award, but I would like to commend our street department. Charlie and the guys, if you've seen them cleaning the sidewalks, that machine they're using, they built it themselves. Send the city a little bit of love yourself. We're working on folks. Moving on to our unfinished business. Consideration of and action on second reading of the bond ordinance authorizing the issuance by the City of Oak Hill of its sewer revenue bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four million nine hundred forty-nine thousand dollars. Bonds for the purposes of financing costs of the acquisition, construction, renovation, improvement and equipping of certain additions, betterments and improvements to the existing public sewer system of the City of Oak Hill. Including without limitation, additional costs of upgrades to Menden Road Wa- wastewater plant, rehabilitating approximately four hundred eighty manholes in the Menden area, moving and replacing sections of gravity, sanitary sewer line, rehabilitating two, excuse me, existing pump stations, decommissioning, decommissioning two pump stations and. decommissioning, decommissioning two pump stations and constructing new gravity sewer line and constructing two new pump stations to reduce cycle times and pay cost of issuing the bonds and related costs. All right, one more. This is the second reading. Pardon me, folks, I got a summer call of all things.
Yeah, this is.
This is the bond ordinance.
This is what started in October, right?
Yes. This ordinance authorizing the acquisition and construction of certain additions, betterments and improvements to the existing public sewerage facilities of the city of Oak Hill and the financing of the cost not otherwise provided. Thereof, through the issuance by the city of Oak Hill of not more than four million nine hundred forty-nine thousand dollars in aggregate principal amount of the city of Oak Hill sewer revenue bonds in two series. The first series to be designated sewer revenue bonds, Series Twenty Twenty Four A, a West, I'm sorry, Series Twenty Twenty Four A West Virginia SRF program. And the second to be designated sewer revenue bonds, Series Twenty Twenty Four B West Virginia SRF program, providing for the rights and remedies of and security for the holders of such bonds. Authorizing execution and delivery of all documents relating to the issuance of such bonds, approving, ratifying and confirming bond purchase agreements with the West Virginia Water Development Authority and the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection relating to such Series Twenty Twenty Four A bonds and Series Twenty Twenty Four B bonds. Authorizing the sale and providing for the terms and provisions of such bonds and adopting other provisions relating thereto. Very much it was the second reading. Second reading for our bond ordinance.
A second.
This is improperly moved and seconded. We said the reading, the second reading of the bond ordinance. All those in favor? All opposed?
Mayor, I'd like to point out, I know this is after the vote now, but our, the city of Oak Hill locals at their board and the city of Oak Hill, it's, it's, they're obviously related. The city council appoints, appoints the members of the board, the management board. But those funds are not intermingled. I, I know it's been suggested by some that ARPA funding be used for the local sanitary board to that. That doesn't happen, can't happen, and uh, uh, expenditures of the sanitary board affecting the city and vice versa, that is not happening. So I just, I just wanna point that out, because there's a lot said about the finance of Oak Hill, I think.
Kind of like two different entities, ain't it?
They're, they're two, the sanitary board's autonomous.
Yeah.
A large.
That was always thought. I mean, that's what I always thought.
Right. But obviously, like right now, you, you know, projects and things like that have to be approved by this council, so they're not, you know, one hundred percent. But they do operate in, in, uh, in, in bondage separate, um, I mean.
Motion is carried. Thank you, guys. Moving to new business, Planning Commission recommendation to add non-automotive sales lot to zoning definition.
This is, yep, this is um, so that when we have something to be sold other than automatics, um, we wanted to have the definition in there and also in the land use table. Um, it will state where that can be, where a, a non-automotive sales lot can be placed. So the definition is an establishment that sells or rents large goods such as boats, recreational vehicles, playground equipment, heavy equipment, and or machinery, manufactured homes or prefabricated buildings primarily from an open lot. Parking to conform with Section fifteen point four six point oh six of industrial wholesale warehouse. So we wanna add that definition between um, two thirty-seven roadside farm product stand and the current two thirty-eight salvage yard. And then if you were permitted in B three and industrial. So in order to have an open sales lot, you'd have to be zoned B three, industrial, which makes more sense, I, I think. Um, and then the land use table, if you get, that should be in the next. It'll show that it's down. I think it says, it'll say sales lot. Yeah, but it shows where it's permit, it'll show being permitted in industrial and B three.
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember what it was. It's in alphabetical order. There said outdoor storage or something.
I say it'd be damn close to bottom. Yeah.
Sales lot.
Thirty-eight, right there.
And so that'll show permitted in B three and industrial.
Can, can you go back up to one? Allison, can you go back up to one, outdoor storage? Okay, that's conditional in B three. Okay, so if somebody okay, so if somebody made a it would be a motion, but if somebody made an argument that they were, that was too much. It would be conditional, but.
Right, it's, it does have to come before B C A.
Well, the, the, the whole problem is, see, and this, this might be stood in here, it's like if you had, if you wanted to do a storage lot, like if you had a motor, if you wanted to do a storage lot, it was a problem. And it was in B three, you could do that. But if I wanted to have an outdoor, um,
That says outdoor storage or wrapped.
Okay.
Some B hits, B hits. What's the line above it say? Yeah, and that's if you just have that in your, yeah, that's, that's intentional. That's a accessory.
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, the, the purpose of this definition to be added there is to have something that addresses like what was going on between Burger King and up there where somebody just comes in and pops up and starts trying to sell storage buildings on a lot somewhere, and it's not addressed right now in any ordinance or land use table anywhere.
We'd have somewhere for them to go. Well, we have B three properties, which is okay, good. Well, those different ones, all, everything out, uh, where Pizza Hut is, that area is B three.
You have industrial out there by industrial park. There's some other B three down towards the end, very end, did there?
Yeah, we'd have a so.
So there aren't ones that says someone just said this. Do they commit here to be required about that? And that's what they should be, instead of just setting up something that's.
They should get a business license and A B N O and.
Get it through all the red tape that everybody else has to get through. It's, I mean, that's part of the city. Their, their manager, you could just go and throw it.
So we need a motion, how this is the first reading to that.
I make a motion to just be the first reading to add the sales lot non-automotive to the uh, Liam, you say?
I second. Your question may have a second. Recommendation to add non-automotive sales lot to zoning definition. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the vacant building registration fees.
This came up in our meeting the other night, was asked to be put on the agenda, so Sheri has put in the current fees for vacant buildings. And this is something to come down a little bit, Allison, right there. So those are the current fees right now. Can we increase those? You can do it, you can do it however you want. I will tell you that most of the people that we have registered now are residential properties as opposed to commercial.
We don't have none of the commercial businesses up here?
I don't know that we have any. Sheri saw, Sheri's been the one that's working on that lately. And so we don't have the best.
So if they have a, uh, business on Main Street, but it's not been open for the past ten, fifteen years, we can't do anything?
We can, they're supposed to be paying, but we don't have a register, so we're not being billed for it, right? Is that? Mayor, assessment?
If they have utilities to that, that's, that's the requirement. So you have to have the utility and I don't know what, what has in there, I think. Look at the top and see what considers, what is, um.
So there's really no I, I don't, penalty, I guess, might be the correct word, that if you have a building on Main Street, commercial or business or whatever, at where we stand right, and correct me if I'm wrong, but where we stand right tonight, if you let it go vacant, you can, it can just go vacant and it's just nothing. We're not.
I don't think this says, this doesn't exclude commercial properties. I just think that we haven't registered, sent those letters out in the past to register.
Right, so we need, we need to get it, that.
We have people looking to be on Main Street. We have buildings, but you know, they're not kept up, they're in.
And we're not penalizing the people for letting them go vacant.
Right.
And Allison, she can speak up.
Sure, so that, actually, that's one of the biggest challenges uh, that we've had, especially looking at how get ready for files and records, like one hundred, nearly two thousands, and moving to now. There we go. No, I'm fast, that's refreshing. Okay, so um, that is definitely a challenge that we have, uh, we've identified and we are addressing. Step one has been the commercial building database. Uh, what we've seen, honestly, with some of the transactions in the past, was there's, there's a consistent uh, feel that I got from business owners that several of these ordinances were not, or have not been enforced fairly in the past. Um, with uh, with whatever we decide to do moving forward, we've got to make sure we can do it transparently, fairly and consistently. So step one is the commercial building database. Uh, we've been working on that. We've already got the system built and it's just time to populate it, but those take times, you know, with more person than economic development, that, that certainly takes time to build those databases. Uh, past that, the next part is looking at the ordinances themselves, right? So it's one thing to find somebody twenty bucks, nothing's one to change. Um, as we approach these vacant commercial properties, um, it's not a matter of opinion, it's a matter of fact. As far as what do we need to do to actually change people's behaviors so that those buildings are not vacant anymore and we can have thriving businesses in them? Um, it's more complex than we'd like it to be. Part of it is definitely, uh, we have got to be able to assess financial penalties that have teeth uh, on these commercial properties. But based on how much money, based on what timeframe, um, how should these be worded for commercial properties specifically? Um, these are concerns, the, these are questions that we have to address and it's a matter of fact kind of thing. So, you know, our end result nonetheless is still to take these buildings that are vacant and uninhabitable, turn around and wind up with buildings that have, buildings that are up to code, safe for occupation, and have thriving businesses in them, but that's the end goal. So it, we gotta take a multifaceted approach at this and um, my intention, as soon as we get there, is to present a plan to council that will include um, up very, or updates, recommended updates to the vacant commercial properties or vacant commercial property wording uh, in our code is one of those. Uh, also grant opportunities, uh, different funding, funds that we as a city can apply for in the administrative buildings. Um, yeah, I am partial subject matter expert on this, but it's, it's pretty complex, so. We're also getting help on this now from uh, members of Senator Capito's staff, from members of Congresswoman Miller's staff, and also from uh, our secretary, our Secretary of Tourism in West Virginia, Chelsea Ruby. So we're looking at this on a local, state and federal level to build an all-encompassing package that gets us to where we need to be, which is vacant, uninhabitable buildings, to buildings that are up to code and ready for and receiving thriving businesses, but it's more complex than just one thing or the other.
So when, will that include, like, I'm assuming that will include, like, you said ordinances looking into it, something fair that says, hey, we need to charge this, we need this a lot of time, right? And how far out are you out on that?
Depends on our partners more than anything. Um, I never knew about it before the end of the year, uh, will, will be. Partners, the people that we work with, right? Cause we don't handle this in a silo within the city. My partners are gonna be Tourism Secretary, uh, Congresswoman Miller's, uh, Kim, apologize, I'm blanking on her last name, she's a wealth of knowledge. Um, also our partners in Senator Capito's office. So we're working with other people, not just city of Oak Hill employees, uh, to get, to figure out what it is we need to do. What are the rates we need to charge? And then also, once we get this information, the other part of it is building this into our GIS database. Because once we can do that and enforce them through GIS, um, or keep track of them, rather, through GIS, it takes less people to manage. And that saves the city money, right? We can do more, more accurately, more fairly with less people.
What wording? You said nothing good of wording in the ordinance, what first priority?
We don't have anything that addresses vacant commercial buildings specifically. And what we're looking into on that front is do we need wording that addresses commercial buildings or buildings in a commercial zone specifically, like in a business zone? Uh, and if we do, what does that wording need to be? What's worked other places and what time periods and what rates? Um, do the, with these ordinances, what would we, what would our partners recommend to actually see some movement in that sector?
Have you checked with any of the other municipalities? Well, the only reason why I'm asking that question is because I have. I've dealt with Huntington now for last couple of months, talking about vacant building registry and Alex Campbell down there. There's actually a lawyer that set up theirs. He sent it off to me. I had every bit of it. He actually helped Princeton set up theirs, and he is the one that told me too, if you don't sit down and dig, make them dig deep in their pockets, they're not gonna get up off their butts and do nothing.
That's why you have all these buildings sitting there.
Exactly.
Penalty.
You can get ahold of John Tug.
For them to fix them up and get somebody in there because
That's why we don't have them.
Just sitting there. We're not penalizing them, we're fining them, and then they don't have to get anybody in.
Webb, I'm sorry, from Princeton told me that I could get ahold of John Tugle over Somersville, who is region four GIS. And he could have that on our GIS I system in a week.
It's not that simple. Um.
What he told me, it didn't take enough for theirs.
If you can see a, a way to do that, I'm sure we would, we'd love to sit down with you in the office.
I'm just telling you what I was told by somebody else, because we was asking, I mean, I've been asking a lot of questions about the vacant building registry. I've been asking it since I got on this council. So I've been kind of investigating some of it myself, uh, and to find, you know, Bill had a lot of it already done. And to find, you know, Bill had a lot of it already done whenever he set this up back in oh nine or twelve, Bill, whenever you did that.
Same place back that far, but there was nothing on the books prior to that, but when you do get it on the books, it is complex. It's, it's.
It may require you using a spreadsheet, it's not on GIS.
Yeah, I know that, but Mike said that John Tuggle, if we wanted, we could get ahold of him and he would help us to get this foot on GIS.
I, I think there was some, there was a start with GIS.
Uh huh, it was, you told me, pull it up and it actually does have it on GIS. It doesn't have nothing to it, it's just.
I think two thousand eighteen, so.
Might have been, might have been that.
The challenges with that system, as it's been explained to me, what was built out is it was not built out with the different departments in the city that needed to use it at the table and so it lacked functionality to the point that it's gotta be blown up and started.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, maybe you might wanna get ahold with Alex.
And we don't have anything to put, uh, we don't have anything to send out the reminders to tell us when everybody's.
I, I mean, it's not, but you, you can do the GIS if you run a monthly report, we can show you which ones are due.
Yeah, that's what Mike Webb was telling me from Princeton, he said they can run a monthly report exactly where.
Let me get translated from wherever.
So what's, what's wrong with this right now, like, you said it doesn't have commercial properties?
It covers commercial properties, however, if you've got a property that you've been sitting on for a while and these have not been, the code hadn't been enforced on these commercial properties in the past, then everybody, everywhere we are is starting at two hundred bucks. If you've been sitting on this building for twenty years, to think that two hundred dollars is gonna make you move is, is not realistic.
Probably not, so I think at this point, we already have a good, we have the section here that's already here. I think we just need to change a little bit of the, the amounts, we're giving them one a hundred and eighty days, I mean, that's a long time.
Yep.
I, I mean, look at, search it on.
That's six months.
I think that's a long time, a lot places.
It didn't start out at six months, it started out at forty-five days.
There you go, a lot of cities now do like sixty days.
Thirty, sixty.
You're getting fined, so I think it's as simple as, as we, we changing the, the rates and going really harsh.
Sure.
I mean, I'm really harsh.
Well, the intention is to do that as a matter of fact, so that we don't have to come back in six months and say, oh, you know, we, we increased it by not enough, we increased it by too much. You know, just like what Mr. Van Busker was talking about, there are others examples that we have. You know, the reality is just updating this is not the one thing that's magically gonna make those buildings habitable and occupied. That's why we've gotta take a multiple faceted approach to this, but this is, is certainly one of them, and we'll approach that and the fees attached through matter of fact, based on research, what, what's worked in other places.
And when are you saying that you can have this up and running? How long?
I would hope by the end of the year. But again, you know, it, you know, in reality, to, to understand exactly what the issues were that was causing the problem in the first place, you know, we, we didn't get into this overnight and we're not gonna get out of it overnight either. The challenges that have kind of grown over time, those buildings have gotten in worse and worse condition and building codes have gotten more and more stringent. So trying to get those two things to match is, it's a different animal than what this would have been if we were dealing with it, say, ten years ago.
But you can change the fees right now, I mean, not right now, it'd take.
We could set this up for like a future indictment or something we could say tonight, since this is discussion, I mean.
You can put that to change the fee, to actually change the fees.
And.
For next month and you have to go separating.
Yeah.
Next year, first rate. Right, to change the fees, but we also have right now more issues than that, just because Sherry's getting ready to retire. And we've got to, and we need a way to do what Bill said that we don't, I mean, we have to get someone trained and I guess Tyler Prey needs to set up some other things.
But we could go ahead.
I know you're listening, Tyler.
We could go ahead and set up like fees.
I would. Mr. Eller, I would be careful about the fees right now, I, I mean, you can get too lenient, you can obviously get too harsh and this might be good, you know, I, I don't think we have enough information from people that, that are running a successful program, because if you look at it, by the time four years pass, you, well, there's one, there's one more down. Number, it gets up to after five years is sixteen hundred dollars and then three hundred dollars additional every year. And, and you have to, you have to keep in mind, this applies to residential properties too. So sixteen hundred dollars, and of course, albeit, you have to wait five years, but that's pretty steep.
How can we separate residential? And these buildings have sat empty for a long time.
That's true.
So we ought to restructure our ordinance with ordinances and fees for residential, ordinances and fees for commercial and definitions defining commercial, that's.
Yeah, I'm happy if you guys want to ask me that, I can go through the issue next month.
I got these if you need. From Huntington and Princeton, that's there.
And ours is mostly based on what we want. The women's willings, what is.
And I know, when it went from the forty-five days to a hundred and eighty days, it was, it was because there were a lot of complaints to members of council back at that time, but if you have, the, the example then was somebody had a rental house and it's gonna take them several months to renovate the house after their last tenant and they complain, members of council, council changed it from forty-five days to a hundred and eighty.
Well, I could see.
Kind of big things to commercial.
Right.
And I could see what you're talking there too. A residential, but if they're sitting down, they've got building permit and they're redoing it, I mean, that's, you really couldn't consider that as being a vacant building, right?
Well, that's one, but I don't think it says anything in the ordinance about it.
No, because there's vacant buildings out there that people do a little bit of work to, to get out and they, they're still vacant.
And let their building miss expire without any work done.
Okay.
And also my understanding is anyone that's got stuff in their building on Main Street or anywhere in the city, it doesn't matter if it's a commercial building, we could approach and their answer would be as simplified as a vacation.
And it's not.
That's another word for warehouse.
Right.
And that's not.
And then, so we have, we've got that way that we can approach it as well.
And according to zoning, you can have a story, you can have storage on Main Street.
So then if that's the case, then that has the potential to be, but that is the case, right, so that's got the potential to be another way that we can address this, this by confronting each of the owners and talk, just to try to understand what's happening. Well, okay, now it's third violation of the zone.
There's not that many different owners on Main Street, so they can be notified and charged on that. You can start that pretty good.
There's a lot, not a lot, but often you'll find somebody that lives in a residential area and they'll buy a whole next, um, probably a word of it, I guess, house. And I think you could read the the definition of a vacant structure, that's still gonna meet the definition of a vacant structure, that was, I know that was always a problem.
That is still a problem, because a lot of times people are gone for the summer and they have, and they pay people, they keep their utilities on and they pay people to take care of the house.
Yep.
And, but it's still vacant.
You're calling like a snowbird.
Right.
Yeah, but not only that.
But that, that hundred and eighty days helps that usually. If they're just gone for the winter.
Right, but that's not only because there, there's people that, I know, several, probably every, every single property next to them, they'll, they'll maintain it, will use it as a guest house, but still meets our definition of a vacant structure, which is not, or in any of, if somebody's maintaining it and, and using it as a guest house. That will come up.
Yeah, and Allison, I, I, I see where you're saying we need to separate the, I agree with the residential from the commercial, because if you can start at one end of Main Street and go to the other, a lot of our buildings are commercial on bottom, residential on top. So we need to look at that as the top being, you know, if it's occupied, it's an occupied residence, but if the bottom's commercial and it's vacant, then it's a vacant building, it's a vacant commercial building that needs to be either a business in it or fine, assess the, yeah. Right, issues buildings, however, yeah.
So it gets complex.
It does get complex, I, I see.
Pam, can we get with these building owners that's got plywood on the front of their buildings? Can we not get with them, find out what their plan is?
This is a big part of that.
I got pictures of the other place, all kind of trash in front of the, front of the building. That looks terrible, and I've got a picture on my phone of it and I thought. The one now opening across the gas station, plump full of trash all on the front.
That's one they're trying to, they are trying to open that.
Trash dumpster, it's on the sidewalk coming, you know, it looks pretty bad when you drive through town. My opinion, I just think if I was from Old High or North Carolina, drive through and I got three kids in the car and, you know, it's probably better somewhere else to eat and run around, that's my opinion, it just looks pretty bad.
I mean, they're in the process of moving in there.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, they're working on that.
Yeah, they gotta go through the BCA yet, right?
Well, when you work on, can you get a dumpster or something and instead of leaving on the sidewalk?
And Chris complains about dumpsters.
Put it behind the building, that's a good place for us not seeing. I do, there's gonna be somewhere you don't see it.
Speaking of that, the tobacco outlet there that used to be the Lewis Chevrolet, are they doing anything with that building?
It's not.
I mean, that is just an eyesore right now. Web is busted out of there and everything else.
That's the ones that should be getting pretty good tickets.
So you can, you can come back with something next month, some more information, you say, a presentation for an idea of how we should go with this, well, maybe with some different, or, or what, because I, I, I'm like, sure, or I think we need to move on this.
Sure, that was my point, I'm not saying that tonight we need to set rates and move. I'm just saying, this, this has been vacant for, this has been, we haven't followed this for a while and we need, we need to, we need to get it going.
Yeah, and it's, to, to do everything at the same time is impossible, but Mr. Van Busker has offered to help with that and just that really having two people, eyes and minds to bounce back from it. That's gonna save us a lot of time, increase my bandwidth, so is itself, yeah, I think.
So do we have a ordinance on the books or can we make a ordinance that they have to keep? I mean, even if it's vacant, they still, they have parents, something's gotta, I mean, if it's on Main Street.
We, probably with our code, we could condemn every building on Main Street. But is that what we wanna do?
I don't think we want to do that.
Looking into that too, Ms. Janey, and making stuff a little bit more stranger.
Send letters to all of them, Ben is itching to do that, but I'm planning. Because I don't think that probably that's not very well much to come across. Okay.
Well, I think what, I mean, even though you have the vacant building, you can still keep the storefront clean. I mean, you, you can go down some of these and they got sidewalks and grass loading up into it and everything else, I mean, every building that is working according to our zoning has to keep the, their storefronts clean and have to keep the grass off the sidewalks and everything else. What's the, any difference with an owner of a building that ain't working? I think that's where she's coming from, I mean, it's, I don't think it's that we wanna sit down, try to condemn, we just want them to kind of keep the sidewalks and the grass and stuff down.
We can still let those that says but maybe, yeah, can you clean up around the place, but.
I don't think cleaning up is not, you know, I don't think that's really something that's hard to ask anybody, I mean.
Yeah, I think you need to, I think you, you need to have a little bit of ordinance to buy up. I mean.
Do we have that ordinance?
That's for sure we do. We don't have one that just says clean up.
No, I think that you have one that says that your storefront has to be clutter free and grass free. You have to do the tractor spile all the time.
Yeah.
That was the city ordinance whenever we got told about it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, you can't be real general in it, though, you, you go say we notice your violation of, of the ordinance and here's the copy of the ordinance, we need to do this. And I, I'm not saying we, we have an ordinance, as many ordinances as we may need. Well, I know there are things that, that aren't addressed publicly, that maybe should.
Let's just get into a tough area, because a lot of opinions are different on what is nice and what's that's.
So that might be something we may need to revisit later. Something, I, I'm just asking, I mean, I'm not, I mean.
Yes, I think that would be, well, we're having certification day, I'm gonna, so that might give some thanks.
Because I mean, you know, you look at some of the other businesses we have and I mean, some of the storefronts is really, really nice and you do an empty building and it looks like somebody is ready to shove the ladders in and tear it out.
All right, folks, any more discussion, you want to move on to the next? Virginia Street sidewalks?
Uh, we were just gonna give an update, I just wanna give you an update on that. It's, we're still, we did, we're still working on that. I applied for the grant to finish the sidewalks. We've drawn down a little bit of the engineering cost to pay the engineer. Uh, we're still, I haven't gotten to talk to Josh since I've been back, since I've been back about uh, the entry from Virginia Street up to the park, have you worked on that anymore?
We haven't worked on it, but we're coming up with a plan in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so that people can cross, if they, if they have a wheelchair, they can cross from Virginia Street and have something to go up on the other side of the park, on the rail trail side. To go up the grass.
So that was just asked that, because they knew we were having a meeting tonight.
Right, so, uh, Josh has identified the best place to put that and we just need to work on how to accomplish that.
I'm, I, I was down that way the other day and actually not by an arranged meeting, but just by a happen chance thing I met with Mr. Mello that ran into her and, and she come here because of her situation with her, her child and I actually walked over and looked where her house is and her access and and the trouble that someone with a physical limitation would have getting from that side to that side is tough. The sidewalks are in bad shape there, so if we could move on that, I think it would be, especially with the park opening up, you know, and, and this fall and, and here soon and and all that's going on over there, it's packed every evening, to be able, you know, to help. You know, to help someone get across. Where she's at, it's kinda goes like downhill. Now, I'm not sure where you're, where you've identified.
That's from Burkeholder.
I'm just saying right in that area, but is there a way with that said, that. And I know you, you've applied for the grant and stuff for the sidewalks and I know part of that is being, getting a pole set back. So that you can put a nice, you know, walk down through there. I know a couple of meetings ago, we talked about it. It'd take up to three years before we could get, you know, funding. And I know we can't now, but is there something that we can, that can be done in the meantime for maybe a small section? Here or down in that area or, I, I don't know, cap it, just. Little two inch concrete cap on it to just smooth it up or something, maybe I'm. I use asphalt or just to make it a little bit easier. Um, to come off the sidewalk over onto that, you know, just something kinda temporary maybe. Yeah, like in that area or some of the, maybe, uh, down, down, down through there. I, I don't know. I'm trying to think out loud here. Maybe Charlie or, or y'all may have some ideas that you can throw out there, but I just know with someone, not just with a wheelchair, but with a physical, just. Limitation, trying to be correct here, physical limitation. If you were on a cane or a walker, it is so uneven and so rough there. That it is hard to walk. And I know we're trying to get something done as a whole area, but. Maybe if we could start like with the crawl area that we were gonna put the walk, the access point. And start in that little area with something easy. And you may already have that. And if you do, Josh, I'm sorry. I ain't bringing it up.
Okay, I'll work with Charlie and try to come up with.
I thought at one time y'all was gonna do that in Duncan.
Yeah, Day Day and I met with, uh, with the state, uh, we're not sure if it's gonna be Burkeholder or Duncan, but that area, yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, Burkeholder probably could easier to get to the rail trail, cause it's not as high.
You try to resolve this.
I know y'all are doing a super job. I sit down and see it every day, man. When you come down Virginia Street, there's. That place is loaded. I mean, every day it's loaded. Same, can't get some vendors down there to sell stuff.
Anyone else? Now we'll move along. Our updates on the Optimum channel, Mr. McGuffin is here.
Yeah, step up into the microphone. Good to see everyone again. I'd just like to give you an update on the progress of your new Optimum channel, um, channel four. Um, a purchase order was issued beginning June, um, by the media. We got contact with Optimum, they got all the paperwork. Uh, things were kinda stagnant for about two months. Um, I'm not sure exactly what happened internally with Optimum, but, but things were very stagnant to the point I finally reached out, contacted and say, look, it's been two months. We anticipated this project being done by the end of July. And I included the media and all of its, uh, response emails with, with, uh, Optimum. So last Monday, myself and Tyler Bragg, we went to town, unfortunately that day, had a, um. Who's, you know, conference call with Optimum. Um, basically what was stated was. Um, the equipment is purchased to send to Charleston. The, at the time I talked to him on Monday, this was last Monday, it could be another. Three or four weeks on the completion of the product. That was Monday. Uh, Wednesday I got an unexpected phone call from Tyler that Optimum was actually here at City Hall installing the product. So which was great news. I, I had no idea that they would get on that so quickly, you know, it was anticipated in three or four weeks. In the meantime, that same conference call, we actually, uh, agreed upon a temporary solution to get the channel. As you have seen over this past weekend, the channel is operational and meeting tonight is live one, uh, okay. Uh, we had to utilize assets that were currently in place by our company at the cable head end. To get the channel temporarily. Um, basically we're using the IP connection to get from here to the head end. And we already had assets in place, uh, for our, uh, pre, pre used channels. Uh, that is able to be utilized to get the channel on temporarily. So that bought us some time. Uh, what I didn't want to get into was trying to get this completed before all of the people that were going to be placed at the end of the month, such as Oak Hill Festival. Uh, we have a meet the team event for the local schools on the twelfth, Sunday, the twenty fifth. And we have high school football and, uh, middle school sports starting up. So we didn't wanna get into the situation where we potentially missed, um, the start of this. Um, so we did put a temporary solution in place. Uh, Optimum was here Wednesday. They did run the fiber from City Hall to Central Avenue. That's in place. They have to come back and terminate it, which will hopefully be within the next week. I have to coordinate with them and. See, uh, when they can actually show up here and terminate the fiber.
They were here today and put, um, a piece of equipment in that case.
Okay. So it's a bigger progress. So, yeah, a lot of times they just show up and unfortunately they don't communicate, but. Um, the good thing is it is operation. So the temporary solution was put in place to basically get the channel up and run and troubleshoot it. It'll take a few weeks to troubleshoot everything and everything working smoothly. Um, everything is able to be remoted. Um, basically anything, if, I don't know if any of you wanted upstairs there, since we placed the rack up there on, on, uh, Thursday, which I appreciate. The help to get it up the stairs is quite heavy. It took about three hours to wrestle it up there, but. Uh, everything in that rack can be remoted, um, so you don't have to have access, uh, with the bases here in City Hall. So I could troubleshoot, restart the equipment, uh, access it all remotely. So that makes it, uh, makes it easy on my part. And I don't have to hassle someone here at City Hall to open the door for me. Um, but we do plan on, uh, a number of community events getting placed on the channel, um, in the upcoming month. Right now we have previous broadcasts being placed on the channel just to build some time spots, so. You'll see previous football games, graduations, parades, softball games. You'll see that all in there after the time being till we get some new content. But, uh, coming up, we'll have plenty of opportunity to do. Uh, we still have to put a mechanism in place to get community information on the channel. That's something I could possibly work with Tyler or some other leading person here at City Hall. To set up a way to get information to me to get placed on the channel. For example, um, almost immediately after putting the channel on, uh, Friday. I was contacted by the Amplifier Committee to put, um, a, uh, advertisement on there for the movie night that took place Saturday. Which should only take about fifteen minutes, a place that on there ran, uh, on a loop, uh, Saturday and then, uh, some previous day of Friday. So, but we had to have a mechanism in place to build and give you that information that the city wants on the channel. I could possibly set up a Google Drive account or what have you, so the city can draw graphics or what have you, uh, for me to get those on, so. But that's the main thing to get information out to, to people. It's like, uh, tonight's meeting, uh, also had another advertisement. It, it played on a loop. It was approximately five minutes long, it stayed on there advertising that. This meeting will be live to nine o'clock, six p.m. on Optimum Channel Four, so. Um, and that's something I wanna keep on the channel is the information for, because that's the biggest complaint I hear is, well, I didn't know something was set in place. And now that you have this asset as a city, it should be utilized. And that's something I wanna keep on there is the information for, for the community. And we just have to get the mechanism in place, uh, for somebody here at City Hall to get that information to.
Can local businesses advertise commercials or whatever they're, they're on that?
They can. The only stipulation we put in place when we voted on it was, uh, you can't be an employee of the city or involved with the channel in any official capacity. So for example, all I could advertise your, I think your business, so, um, but. Any other business within the city or local area can, can do so.
Contact you and.
Yeah, so I'll start getting information out. I wanted to, to get everything, uh. Only technical side work is me leaving. They may send me working on it from time to time here in the next few days. When I had free time this week, this past weekend, I did work on it. Uh, but the main thing is up and running. Um, now that I know they were here today, I'll run upstairs and see, uh, what, uh, they actually got completed. But everything on the city's end, everything on my end is one hundred percent completed. Everything that's, needs to be in place is in place upstairs. So, uh, that, that part is one hundred percent done. And we are running content on Optimum. So it gives access, uh. Kinda listen in on your conversation among each other, you wanna be meeting about, um, rumors, misinformation going on about the city. This channel gives the city the opportunity for the community members to see what's taking place here at City Hall. And it's, it's easy as turning your TV on now, so you can't have, uh, any better access to information than just turning your TV on. So this will help the city out greatly in getting information out there and kinda stop those rumors from being spread. Cause now they can actually watch the city council meetings live. And once they get home, I'll place this within the playlist and run it for at least the next week. So people will continue to be able to see this, uh, meeting, um, for those who weren't able to watch it live tonight. So, uh, yeah, your, this content will be live on Optimum Channel Four, our Facebook, YouTube, Roku Channel. And we all offer online website with our twenty-four seven channel, so. We've got five different media outlets you guys can be watched on, which, which is great. You have the best exposure as far as. Media outlets of any municipality in the state. So City of Charleston, Huntington, Willing, Martinsburg, they don't have that type of access that you guys have. So people really don't have an excuse now to not know what's going on or for misinformation to be spread because. They'll have acts, have access to it for, for really the first time in a long time. It's been a while since your council meetings have been on, on TV, approximately twenty years, I would estimate. So this is a good thing for the city. Um, it's, yeah, it's a work in progress. If you guys have any questions, ideas, recommendations, just reach out. So I'm a pretty easy person to get ahold of and, um, the, I just wanna make this channel for the community. And put the content that people wanna see on it. So now that it's up and running, we'll start reaching out to community organizations to, to get that content back on the channel. I've already contacted about a few local businesses, churches interested in giving your content back, back on the channel. Over the next couple of weeks, I'll be working with, you know, to make that happen. So it won't happen overnight, but. Uh, hopefully in about a month, we'll have everything to where it should be at. And you'll see, like I said, a lot more content, um, on a local level. And that, that's important thing. It's one, playlist is one hundred percent loop. So that, that, that's great for the community. It's good exposure for the city. Uh, as you mentioned, there's not a whole lot of positive things taking place, but this is definitely a positive thing for, for the city itself. And, um, it's, it's a joint effort between myself and the city. I, I definitely appreciate the support. That the city has given the council members, because it couldn't be done without you. And that's what I reiterate to people is you guys, you know, you made this happen. So I couldn't do it by myself. But, uh, the main thing is to continue to support this channel. So, and as I mentioned, reach out if you have any questions, comments. Um, but hopefully the fiber will be done within the next week, which, which is great. It's going. Quicker than expected after that conference call, but I was hoping to have it one hundred percent completed by the end of July. Where the channel is up and running, at least on a temporary basis. So we'll keep that up and running as long as needed. Until the fiber is completed, but I just didn't wanna get in that situation where we miss very important community events. So, any, any questions? All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Aaron. Let me just tell you, by the way, after building one, I know what you're going through. It's much nicer on this side. Instead of being a man.
Yeah.
Or I'll pry anyway. All right, number six, a consideration of a letter of support for the Hubcap Community Engagement Team.
That's a good name. Uh, and also I wanted to say, uh, so I just got a text from my dad saying, hey, Allison, I'll see you on page one two and four right now. So people are actually watching as we speak and my dad can hear me. So dad, thanks for running the girls to practice today. I appreciate it. All right. So yeah, that's what, the, the, the channel's fantastic. And thank you for all the hard work that you've put into bringing that back. It's, you know, it's a great thing. Uh, so, uh, ladies and gentlemen, what I'm here to talk to you about now is, uh, the Oak Hill Community Engagement Advisory Team. So the reason, um, we formed this with our partner being West Virginia Community Development Hub. So we're using professionals to help us, uh, organize the best way we can. Uh, this team in particular will be a great help for our comprehensive plan. So, um. The, uh, the purpose of this team is, it is a diverse group of community members committed to helping the community of Oak Hill. Be more informed and active in facing community challenges and supporting community progress. Um, specifically the, the people in this advisory team. Uh, we started basically with just sticky notes on the map, identifying our neighborhoods in the city of Oak Hill and also the places on the outskirts. Uh, to make sure that on this team, we've got representation from all of our areas, uh, in Oak Hill. And we also identified other important sectors, uh, that's gonna be things like healthcare, education, law enforcement. Um, people that, people in different groups, youth, um. Uh, Katie Hayes, for example, for education, uh, has agreed to be on this team. We've got about fifteen people right now. We're looking for a few more. Uh, but the point of this team, the biggest use, first off, is gonna be for our comprehensive plan. You know, as we're building this plan, we've got to make sure that we have input from all of our sectors of our community in the ways and. You know, they, they work together and overlap in many ways. And we've got to make sure that we can, um. We can reach out to people and we can get information from our neighborhoods, uh, as, as efficiently as possible. Um, so uses for this team in particular include the comprehensive plan, um. Creating compelling community engagement opportunities, uh, input on new construction product, projects or road projects. Especially if they're going to, um, impact a neighborhood that will have represented, uh, on this team. Uh, input on things like parks and recreation programs. Um, we'll also look into things like the, uh, facing the challenges of addiction and homelessness, uh, in our community. Improving the health and wellness of our community and supporting our youth. Um, so what, uh, with the help of Eric Porries is our, uh, our advisor from the West Virginia Community Development Hub. With his help, um, we're working with the Tamarack Foundation, which is actually in, uh, Canada. That's not the folks in Beckley. It's a different thing. There's Tamaracks all over the place, it turns out. Uh, but we are learning about community engagement and. You know, it's, it's, it's more than just a Facebook post for sure. You know, what, what we're learning is. How do we, how do we make sure that what we're designing for our community is things that they want, right? So we've got, what's the difference between a content expert and a context expert, right? So are we doing things because we think they're a good idea for people? Are we doing things because? We had the humility to shut up and listen to what they actually needed and worked with them. So. This team, um, that's, that is, uh, their goal. And, uh, our, uh, the way we've got it set up is. Basically we'll do annual plans for, uh, different community engagement events. And then we'll update those, uh, every ninety days, so every quarter. Uh, and also because this team, uh, is gonna have a lot of impact on the comprehensive plan. I would ask that one or two would be great council members, uh, if you guys would consider volunteering to be a part of this team. Um, that would be a, a great help for us too, cause then you guys can see it from, from both perspectives. Um, we are asking for this, uh, letter of support for this team, essentially to acknowledge that it does in fact exist. It has been built. And so that this team will have the ability now that, uh, once it's recognized by the city. Uh, to last longer than a certain economic development director or a certain group of people on, uh, this team. We wanna make sure that we can keep it established. So that's the reason, uh, we are asking you to consider, uh, issuing a letter of support for this organization. And if you guys are good with it, then I can, uh, I'm happy to present the letter at the next meeting or we could draft it whenever you prefer. Any questions? Volunteers?
I will.
Thank you. I've always seen a lot of you.
That may not be a good thing.
I was gonna say something. All I ask is bring lunch, at least snacks.
Or add sausage and.
Yeah, yeah. Don't order in McDonald's whenever you're talking to her on the phone.
You want to offer a motion?
I'd like y'all for that motion for a letter of support.
Please, sir.
I'll second that.
Motion's probably voted second. A letter of support be written for the Hubcap Community Engagement Team. All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Allison, if you'll just, just a second, do you have an economic development report?
I do, and, uh.
And I want to, department reports, and since you're there, we'll start with you.
Sure. So, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I uploaded my report yesterday. Uh, we were at the municipal league conference for, uh, two and a half days this past week. And so that, that kind of took away from my time to get the report done. So I was a little late uploading it. Uh, I did take some more time this month to go through and, um, include everything that I've been up to. So, you know, typically I'll just give you a quick snapshot of the things that I think are going to matter to you guys the most and then just let it go from there. But, uh, this month I went more in depth. So if you see it's, I think it's like four or five pages this, this month, and that's why. So, you know, the, the major topics, uh, one of them are congressionally directed spending requests. Um, we do have an update on that. So again, we don't, we can talk about this at meetings, but we can't issue press releases yet. We have made it to the final round of acceptance on two of the five congressionally directed spending requests we put together. And that is gigantic. It's great news. Um, the two that we've, we've made it, uh, to the final phase for. The first one is, uh, the $109,000 for our safety and security upgrade, which is body cameras and drones. So that's a great safety upgrade and increases our, enhances our search and rescue ability as well. So that's fantastic. Uh, and then the other one was, uh, we've made it to the next round of funding. The only thing left is for this to actually be signed into law, uh, of $1.00 million, or I'm sorry, $1.8 million congressionally directed spending, um, portion for phase three completion of the Oak Hill City Park. So when we talk phase three, we're looking at a, an accessible walking trail, more shade, um, more, uh, the, the final phase is phase three for the city park. So as long as the congressionally directed spending gets signed into law, we're, we're on it. So that's, that's very exciting news.
Is that the match that we did for the park?
Nope.
Or is that a different thing?
This is even more. No, this is, yes. So we're going to be handicap accessible, climate ready, all the things. Um, and it's, this is, this, this park will really be something, uh, I, I think. But by the time we're finished with this phase three, the Oak Hill City Park is going to be a destination in and of itself. So it's, you want to talk about an economic driver, I mean, even just the skate park now we see that.
Water park in that, man.
The water park? That's in your backyard, I thought.
Just thought, Maggie.
I'd love to find a way. Uh, also ladies and gentlemen, I've got the, uh, bank building update on there. So we, um, our, uh, our plan on the bank building was to issue a request for proposals. Uh, I have completed that request for proposals. It is 40 pages long and the reason it's that long is because we've got the asbestos reports, uh, and the mold reports included in that. The only thing that we're waiting on, and we have been waiting on since July 18th, is we've got to get clearance from, uh, our legal counsel, not this legal counsel, um, but, um, from our attorney who's representing, uh, the, the city and the building commission on the sale of the bank building. We've got to get his clearance on our terms and conditions section, uh, and we're just waiting on that. That's the only thing we're waiting on. Um, I can't officially issue the report or press release yet because we don't have that. But if you all, if anybody here would like to see it, uh, personally, just let me know. I'm happy to share it with you.
Do you know when you might get that?
Um, I thought July 23rd. So it's, uh, you know, we, folks get busy. We certainly understand that. But until, until we have that information, I'll keep sending emails and, um, you know, I'll knock on his door if that's what it takes, but we'll get there. Uh, also other things that we're working on at the moment. So one of them that's in the report, the creation of an indoor recreation center or master plan. So there's funding available right now through the NRG RDA for technical assistance funding. Uh, we as the city of Oak Hill are, um, are pairing up with, uh, the Fayette Community Foundation, which is new nonprofit. Essentially it's a, a pass through nonprofit that helps with community, um, grants, uh, for things like this. We're working with them, we're, we're working with counterparts in the county commission, the city of Fayetteville as well, to basically put together a master plan, um, or we're requesting funding for the master plan for an indoor recreation center in the Oak Hill and Fayetteville area. And, uh, we have identified so far for sure that we want this to be something that our kids could use here, right? So there's a model where it's an economic driver, where you've got, you know, tournaments from all over the place that come in. But then what we've learned is reality, sometimes when you do something that large, the local kids don't get to use it because it's so full of events all the time. So, um, we're working on more of almost like a YMCA feel kind of master plan. So what we do first is we've got to have the plan ready. And then as soon as funding comes available, we're ready to go. So, you know, we can't say that this is going to happen next year, certainly. But we can say that once funding is available, um, if we are able to, uh, if we win the technical assistance funding from the NRG RDA, then we'll have a plan, uh, ready to go when funding comes down. Uh, we're also, uh, working on a, uh, a, a support and education group, uh, for housing, uh, related rental property owners. So for like our short term and long term rentals, uh, we're working with the city of Fayetteville on that one also, uh, because they've got more short term rentals than we do. So it makes more sense as we try to divide and conquer to help folks. Um, it made more sense for that one to, to be on Fayetteville's side. And that's a, that's a push that's coming from, uh, the town, from us here in Oak Hill to make sure that we're supporting our folks on the business side. Um, and also a, a pretty large group of folks who own short term rentals in the area. So it's a, it's a very good thing for us moving forward. Uh, Collins Property Update, um, we are still moving forward. And we've got, um, the next meeting that Ms. Johnson and I have scheduled is, uh, at the end of this month. So, you know, the, uh, the board of education is, they're certainly our partners, right? And you don't pick fights with your partners, um, and that's not what we're doing here at all. But we are certainly making sure that the, the Collins property safety issues are addressed. Um, we, uh, another thing that I've just gotten approval from from Ms. Johnson is, uh, we're going to start doing social media spotlights on good things in Oak Hill. So that's, uh, basically three, my goal is to get three of these out per week and each of them will be 60 seconds long. Um, one will be a new business spotlight. So that's going to be any business, uh, retail, trade, accounting, whatever, that's less than a year old. Uh, also a local business spot, uh, a local business spotlight. So that's going to be any business, uh, that would like to better inform the public of their existence and services they offer. And, uh, the third one is going to be, we're going to call it Oak Hill Cool, uh, which will highlight fun things to do in Oak Hill. That's going to include things like disc golf, the skate park, um, hiking trails. You know, any, uh, events that we have going on, community events like, you know, what's going on in the amphitheater, for example. That will be in Oak Hill Cool, just, uh, social media spotlights on the different fun things that we have to do. So right now I'm, uh, getting the videos and, you know, since we have such a large audience right now, it makes sense to say it in the meeting. Um, if we have any local businesses that would like to be featured in these spotlights, uh, please email me. Uh, my email is A-I-B-A-R-R-A at oakhillwv.gov. And, uh, just shoot me an email. I'll come out and we will get the footage. First part's getting the footage. The second part is I have to learn how to edit videos. Um, so I'm, I'm on it. That's what YouTube's for, right? You can learn how to do anything. Um, but that, that we do have, uh, coming down the pipe within the next few weeks. Uh, comprehensive plan update, uh, we were, we requested and were officially awarded $150,000 um, from the Fayette County Commission to fund these extensive plans. Um, we have gotten our three different, uh, proposals from uh, different, uh, contractors or consultants for this. And, uh, I'm hoping that at our next building commission meeting, they're able to pick one. And then I've also worked with Lauren Rutherford, who is with our WVU Extension, uh, office here in Fayette County. Uh, she is a planning, um, specialist to evaluate the plans, to make sure that the proposals that we've gotten from these consultants match what we need. Any questions we have, uh, we can answer and have responses to in writing ahead of time. So we're super thorough on that, but for very good reason. This, uh, these plans will not be plans that just go on a shelf. Um, see, we've talked about the community engagement team. We also have a new platform that'll launch in September called Mind Mixer. That's an online community engagement platform. Uh, beautification day. So we have, this is, uh, through our Hubcap program and, uh, partnership with West Virginia Community Development Hub. Uh, we have a beautification day for the city of Oak Hill, scheduled for August 22nd. It's going to be from nine o'clock AM to one o'clock PM. Uh, the game plan is we're going to meet at the amphitheater at 8:45. Uh, from there we'll disperse to different locations within the city. Uh, and then we will meet again at one o'clock at the amphitheater for a community cookout. So we've got flyers ready to go and after this meeting, we're going to be able to start publishing those. Um, we chose to do it in the middle of the workday in particular so that, you know, if, if we've got any local, uh, organizations who would like to have, um, would like to see their business or their staff more involved in the community, we've got a great opportunity for you. Uh, things that we're going to do are include litter pickup, uh, window washing, cleaning sidewalks, uh, placing trash cans. Uh, those, those are the different activities we've got scheduled for that day. And we will have leads from the beautification committee and other volunteers, uh, at each site. So that'll be super fun. Please clear your calendars and come out and support us. Uh, see, we'll see you at 8:45 in the morning on Thursday, August 22nd. Uh, also, we've already talked about the, uh, com- commercial building marketability and occupancy evaluations that we're working on. Uh, and also I put some statistics in there for you guys this week, uh, showing that I, uh, the, the different meetings that I've been to this week. You know, the highlight, for example, eight different community meetings have been held to continue to build our infrastructure of citizen engaged and empowered, um, citizens that are engaging and empowered to help build our community. Uh, I'm regularly at our county commission meetings and other commission meetings to make sure that economic development is in the forefront as we move forward. Uh, and I've also hosted this, this past month, three in-depth sessions with local business owners, uh, who are working to, uh, open or improve their business and connecting them with resources that we've already built through partnerships with the city in the past year and a half. And that's enough for now.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Allison? Can we get a motion to the September report?
I'm excited. Thanks.
I'll second it.
This has been moved a second. We accept the economic development report. All those in favor?
I am.
All opposed? Chief Whitman, do you have anything?
Other rule was submitted.
Okay, Chief Richardson, do you have anything? Mr. Goodell?
Gosh.
Simon, you want to do a quick, uh, Oak Hill Day? Anything?
Not really. So inviting everybody out to the festival, um, time's coming up really fast. We've got a whole full week, almost a full week starts Tuesday. Activities all due to Sunday.
Thank you. Code enforcement's not here and we have an MS4. Are you prepared for it?
Daisy, uh, I'm going to talk a little bit about green infrastructure today. As storm systems across the country age and continue to be tested by extreme weather, many communities are investing in green infrastructure as a resilient and effective approach to managing the impact of stormwater. Green infrastructure practices such as rain gardens, green roofs and permeable pavements help reduce and treat stormwater when the rain falls while providing numerous community benefits. Innovative green infrastructure solutions are wise investments that complete more traditional service system, that complement more traditional service system components. And they can work efficiently and effectively to manage the impact of stormwater and bring value to communities. So maybe someday we can have a rainwater. Uh, also, just as a reminder to people, I know long season's, uh, coming down to an end, but we do have a ordinance that, um, prohibits you from blowing your grass into the streets. So because that is not good for the environment, not good for the stormwater.
That will include their lawn mowers facing the street.
Yes, that means do not face your lawn mowers of streets because that goes right down into the stormwater drains.
Means bad for bikers.
Yes, it is.
All right, can we get a motion to accept our MS4 report and all other reports? Let's get them all together.
I'm making a motion to accept all reports, Mary.
I'll second it. Most of them probably moved a second. All reports being accepted. All in favor? Uh, all opposed. Motion is carried. Any council comments?
I, I've got one thing that's more of a question. Um, I've been approached by a few citizens in the city over, um, a period of time, a few times. And the question has been asked to me and I don't have an answer, so I'm bringing it up tonight is, can the sanitary board be opened back up to the public? And why, if not, why can't it be? Because a couple of people said they would like to be able to come in, pay their bill, if they have a question, talk to somebody without. Cause what I was told is if it's not open there, they come over next door to the city hall and try to get someone to go over to get help and maybe it would alleviate the problem there of people coming in. So that's something I'm just asking, can it be opened? But I personally think it would, it should be. I think that people should, citizens should be able to come in and see somebody smiling face and be able to pay their bill and answer their questions and have the service that the city provides. That's me. If they're already in there working, I think we could, should unlock the door. That's just, that's my opinion.
It, it can be open. I'm not saying that it can't, but it is, we offer so many ways for them to pay without coming in. And there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes and, um, that takes away from time waiting on customers, or waiting on customers. Like that takes away the time they can get ready, enter the meter readings, get the billing ready. Um, it's just.
Does that person then come over to the city hall and walk in and ask some ladies in there to get some?
They have been instructed to tell them that they can pay them, that they're paying with a drop off. Sometimes there are things that happen and we don't turn very many people away. Um, they walk out of there to do that. And it's not that, I mean, when they call, they, they're nice and, and it also saves the ladies that work in there from a lot of complaint and people that are rough.
I, I think something that might alleviate it, it might satisfy everybody because that's, that's, it sounds simplistic, but it's costly. Well, cause if there's a day that, that someone has to work on billing that's in the sanitary board office, you will have to schedule two people when they're, when you might have one person that can take care of all the billing and take care of the office if they're not having to take payments. But if somebody has to take payments and it's a busy time of the month, you, you're going to have to have two people. So it gets costly, it gets pretty costly with labor. Uh, but I, I think what might alleviate the problem and, and most everybody's complaint, if we could get set up with grants or something for, for them to accept a payment without consent. Uh, and, uh, I think they'll do that and that will alleviate most people's need to come into the sanitary board office. Then you're going to have some problems with, you know, a question for billing question or anything like that. But we're, I, I see that handled all the time. Even with the sanitary port closed, this, somebody walking in city hall and having that issue. Uh, or, uh, so I, I think, I would, I would rather the city, us try to have a payment system set up that's structured for, uh, to alleviate this problem. And I'll be, maybe to maybe to make it, in contact. Which, that's fine.
Well, I'm sure.
It's, it's a little bit more complex.
Do they want, do, are they saying that they want cash? Is that mostly?
Well, a couple of people have told me that they want to pay and that is cash. And that they weren't able to do that because they didn't want to drop it in the box, trust issues. Even though it's secure, there is people that, you know, that are, and I get that, so I see that. And then, um, one person was, I had a question about a service. Um, and they weren't able to get in and so they left. And I said, just go back up to city hall. And so. And so that's why I shouldn't have to go in through city hall and have to try to get one of the ladies that's working in the city hall to try to go into the office to bring somebody over. So they felt like that that was an issue too, and I'm trying to hear, you know.
Lisa can call. She wants to get up and, you know, that's that's why she's walking over. It's not that she has to. But most of those issues can be handled with phone call.
There's, isn't there two ladies in there all the time now?
I forgot, all the time.
Well, not on Mondays or Fridays. There's only one.
Maybe look and open it up part-time through the week, like a day or two?
Yeah.
Like, you know, the sanitary board's open two days a week, maybe, when you have two employees, just to try to, and I'm not discounting anything you're saying, I'm just trying to, where people come, you know, wanting to get in there for whatever reason they have, maybe a day a week or something, that the sanitary board will be open, you know.
I'm just, you know, looking at this. We're not the only place. I mean, you can't go to the gas company and pay your gas fee. You can't go to the electric company and pay your gas fee. You can't pay your cable bill. Can't even bill, no, your trash bill.
We're government entity. They're private. Those are private. So that's where I get the difference, so.
Allison, I don't know, you might not even be able to figure it out, but I know it does have a lot of extents, if you have an office available to take payments.
Well, you're dealing with, with money.
Yeah, change.
Now, there's not much cash, certainly not have all that.
We could always have, we could always have security. We could have Wiz over here for two to five.
Okay. I have that written down.
I'll take your case. Any future agenda items? Any other?
I do have a future agenda item. I was talking pretty extensively with Mr. File the other day about an issue that I feel like we have, and some people have contacted me about, but look into a future agenda item about an ordinance for maybe securing and defining trash dumpsters and construction roll-offs, like the big dumpsters that they roll off. We do have an ordinance right now. It's, but it only deals with individual residential garbage containers that are up to 55 gallons, and that's a trash barrel. And so in talking with him, we need to add a covering, like, commercial dumpsters and temporary construction dumpsters, you know, and see, because I feel like there's an issue that we have starting to get more, more, is the appearance of dumpsters and trash spreading in the city, blowing out of them, people getting in them, taking stuff out. It creates health problems, EPA issues, and stuff washing into the creeks and and when blowing stuff around, then you start getting drug use around those. And really, we're talking about trying to get the city moving in a nice-looking direction, and our buildings that look trashy, you don't want to, we got dumpsters that are sitting out in front of buildings that are that are trashy, and I think we need to look into an ordinance that may cover them, and it's not just, you can't just create an ordinance. I mean, we can, but we've got to look at some other places and get some definitions and really see what would be the best way, fair way for the business owner plus the city benefit from it also. You know, you just, so I would like that to be for a future agenda item.
Anyone else?
Could we, could you contact the, at least one of the personal crashbombers to get their take on what Mr. Gill was saying works and what doesn't work? Because it's going to be, you know, if you gate dumpsters by somebody's business, that driver has extra time to get, he's going to get off in front of it and all that. So I'm sure they'll have some they would have some utilize what works in some communities.
Yeah. Be fair to everybody. Just want to do something, whether it's the business, putting a lid on it, locking it up, you know, when they're not at you. Something, I think we need something.
And I just wanted to ask about the electric bikes that are running out of town. I've seen a couple of boys that's riding it's like mopeds up and down the sidewalks. And I know we have an RV but I don't think that actually goes for mopeds on the sidewalks or motorized bikes on the sidewalks. I didn't know if there was an ordinance on that or for bicycles and stuff, because it's a little out of hand. I see them on the rail trail all the time. That's something we should look into.
I mean, the e-bikes would be okay on the rail trail, but you're meaning that you are talking about the scooters that are.
Motorized bicycles. I mean, I've seen guys riding up and down the streets on motorized bicycles.
Sounds like a radiator engine on it, as can be.
Yeah, I mean, that's the same thing as either a moped or a minibike, either one. I seen a minibike the other day down the city park. I don't think we have a they're allowed to be there. I don't know. I just wanted to see if we could check in on that.
The skate park is wonderful, and it's well-used, but there is how it shoots down. These small kids are coming straight off, was actually coming home by somebody in the park. The little girl shot straight out in front of me. So how can we address that?
Yeah, Ms. Jamie. So, you know, when the skate park was built, and we built the sidewalk that leads from the skate park entrance through the parking area into Park Drive, we do intend on blocking that off with the gated fence. So that has yet to happen. Also, just today, we finalized three speed bumps to be placed in front of the skate park on Park Drive. So when the asphalt contractor shows up next week to finish the asphalting along Park Drive that the street department prepared, we'll be installing those speed bumps.
I mean, they're having a great time.
So that will slow down the traffic, vehicular traffic that's flying through Park Drive, so that would be the intent.
Down, Kelly, and then they shoot.
So hopefully, that fence to keep people, kids, from flying down that ramp into Park Drive along slowing the traffic down will help eliminate that.
Thank you. And you would guess more trash containers down there, trash bins. I mean, on the weekend, and it's packed. I just noticed several others are picking up, and there's nowhere to take it, but moving it. If we could get a couple more of them.
Anyone else? Our next regular meeting will be September 9th.
I will mention the Bears of Bruce. There's things going on at 10th Theater, successful, and appreciated most definitely.
It's a good event. Well, all lines are clear. Allison, maybe watch the replay. Thank you, Darren. Good night, everybody.